I got the memo. Feel like I'm comfortable.
Thank you. We're going.
I actually, you know, I'm almost there. It's high.
It's too...
Yeah, it's too much. I come from the labor world.
Yes.
Not a lot of... So the format's gonna be interesting where we do our interviews.
At the end.
Now it's just, uh... I wasn't told what topic.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, what if we... Got really tough questions. Oh, okay, so then... So squared plus...
No, no, not doing that.
Right, right, right. Yes. Three sign, four orders, uh, table developments. Who was mayor in nineteen eighty-two? Oh, okay.
I don't wanna tease or anything.
Seems like, I didn't do an official count, but I know that we had several in the primary. Seems like we had one every week since the forum of some time. She was out of town for a couple of years. Yeah, just different groups wanted to ask questions. Doesn't seem like we're running out of events any time soon. Got two minutes, huh?
Was there an error?
No, he was just asking, I'm not on the board of Project Hope anymore. Um, I turned out, so I was just telling him I'm on the board of the YW.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I pulled back from that for the moment.
Oh, you're no longer?
I'm still there, I'm still helping. As far as, uh, just because there's been too many things I said, okay, bar.
So that was recent?
Yes, yeah. But even though I stepped, I still had a meeting. Well, it's hard to tell, 'cause I still go to the meetings, they still make me run the meetings most of the time. So officially, yes, but officially, no. That's the... I was... Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you can say I am, just because I do run the meetings. It's almost like a co-chair situation. Yes. So when she was out of town, I did the last meeting. We'll see what happens next month.
I'm Rob Curley, I'm the editor of Spokesman Review. Thank you, thank you guys. If you're all related, we give preacher prayer and subscription then. So, uh, thank you all for coming tonight. We've never really done anything like this before, but it feels like this is the time to do it. I, uh, I... Trust me, if you could listen to my voice now for one day, you would love it. Because I am either the craziest person on the planet, in the same day I'm the most liberal guy on the planet and the most conservative guy, either way, everybody's happy. So my journalism professors are happy. So I wanted to tell you all that I'm so happy that you came, because we said, "We wanna do this, but will anybody show up?" And you did, so we're gonna do this more often. The political discourse right now seems so angry and disrespectful, and I don't want that to be the case tonight. You know? Especially, serving on the local level is an honorable thing. And all you really do is get the crap beat out of you, so thank you, regardless of whether you've been or not. I don't know if you knew that, that you've been delaying calls. So I wanted to just be respectful and fun. We're going to try to do many of these, and as a matter of fact, with any way to start a book club. Um, I've done this in the last couple of cities we've been in, and it's great. And when you see the caliber of authors that are coming, you won't even believe it. But I'll talk more about this at the end of the night. Our first book, uh, we're actually gonna have the evening with Sean Vessel. We were planning on opening with Sean Vessel, but I don't know if you just heard, he just won Best Work of Fiction in the state of Washington, so we're like... And I don't know if he's lonely, he's a great writer, he has an amazing voice, he seems to be a great deal right now. It's that good, that good. So there are a ton of rules we're gonna go, this is gonna be a little fun, lively, that we're gonna get hold of all the main topics. But what we wanna do is, 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 is get through three or four races, spend about twenty minutes on each race, that they know that this is a place where people gather and figure out what's on top. So when it's over, you don't have to leave. Let's keep talking, and so if your question doesn't get answered, we're gonna try to just sit around as long as you want. And, uh, so, uh, you have the next space bar. And so why are we doing this? It's time for us all to get together, and then a bunch of these aren't gonna be just here, we're gonna have them at the spokesman. Um, because it's fun to come to the spokesman, because I don't know if you've heard, I have the key to those two towers. So if they'll come, they can go to the tower, right Stacy? Right? The big guy through. So we have some of these in the tower, and some of these at the spokesman, and what's the next slide here? So if anybody there is tweeting, which I, uh, I hated arguments earlier, so I've been tweeting all night. This hashtag, and, uh, or any hashtag, that's fine. Hashtags are legal in Washington, we proved it two years ago. What else we got up here? Let's put the next one there. Okay, so I'm gonna shut up, and, uh, one more slide, one more. Yeah, so your damn handsome host. Hit the next one for me. Jonathan Bryant. So Jonathan, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Oh, I say, I came to the spokesman in two thousand and four, from Michigan State. And, uh, let's see, I come to the city hall for five years, I come from county government, I come from the police.
And talks faster than me. Uh, next one is Kim Hill. Kim, tell us a little bit about yourself.
I am the current city hall reporter for the spokesman review. I came here, by the way, at the University of Missouri, in Columbia, Missouri. And I've been covering the city hall for about a year now.
All right. Well, let's just go on to the candidates, Jonathan Haidenway.
Okay. Well, we have up here candidates for District One, this is Northeast Spokane. We have Kate Burke, she is elected state of aid for state senator Andy Billy. She's been active in many nonprofits, including the YSCA, Project Hope, and the Spokane Edible Tree Project, which you found. Uh, and we have Tim Ben, the former, or sometimes current chairman of the Mini Haha New York Council. And he is a co-owner of a daycare center, long active in Northeast Spokane. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it right over to Kim, we'll start with some topics.
Yeah, um, thanks Jonathan, and thanks you both for being here. Um, Tim, I wanted to ask you first, you've been critical of the city council's sort of progressive majority led by Ben Stucker, saying that they take on tasks that are outside the scope of the city council. But at the same time, sales taxes are up, we're seeing record boom in construction, including roof repair. Aren't we in pretty good times, and why change right now?
Yeah, I think we do have some good times, I think there's some things that we can definitely celebrate in our city, and it's nice to see some roads getting fixed. But talking to the citizens, the number one concern I hear is property crime and drug addiction, and I just don't see our city council addressing that.
What, how should they be addressing that, do you think?
Well, I think we have to have more conversations. We gotta really take a head-on approach with those issues, work with the nonprofits, and find out if we can start coming to the solutions there, because they are growing issues.
Katie Prior, public safety and increasing the size, potentially increasing the size of the police department, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I think we need more officers, we saw a study, right? And it's definitely a priority, although I do think we need to make sure that we're actually solving the real problem. And right now, I see the real problem as mental illness and drug addiction problems. And I'd like to make sure that we're putting our resources and funds into those issues, so we're making sure that we're not having these, these people on the streets, or homeless folks landing on the backs of our citizens and the backs of our police officers. This is a city issue, we need to be a leader on this problem and come up with real solutions.
Let me ask you about the city council, Ben Stucker has endorsed you, the same criticism sometimes they're tackling, things like the oil transition, they go back and forth on that, prepared climate courts. Is that an endorsement that you're proud of, and do you think the city council is doing the right thing by taking up those issues?
Um, I mean, I think a lot of these issues are brought up by the citizens themselves, and so I think our city council is responding to the constituents here. That being said, I will be focusing on basic infrastructure for Northeast Spokane folks. I do see a lack of funding going to my community, and when we have one low spot in the city that's not getting resources, I think that brings the whole city down. And we all know we want equity here in Spokane, and I feel like we need to make sure that we're focusing our priorities. So I will be focusing on that, those basic infrastructure issues.
Let's talk about infrastructure a little bit. Tim, I wanna talk to you about the North Spokane Freeway, or the North Spokane Corridor. We finally got the funding for that, seven hundred fifty million set aside by the legislature, supposed to be done by twenty twenty-nine. But there's no place for cars to exit during that stretch from Trent, uh, from Trent to Wellesley, which means this is basically, isn't it an massive overpass for the district? Does that make sense, are there any more exits?
Well, right now, it's exiting on Freya and coming down my street, actually, so we see the extra traffic. Um, you know, as far as the design goes, I've already met with WashDOT, Washington State Department of Transportation on that. And I think that as they design it, and we have more exits coming in, actually, there's been some design changes on ramp, off ramp at Wellesley. And my biggest concern is that as it comes through, we make sure that there's the right safety measures put into place, good lighting, uh, make sure that we're not creating havens of crime next to freeways, that that happens from time to time. And then we need to make sure it's an economic corridor for Northeast Spokane, not a method to pass us by to a place that makes us a destination for good jobs.
Doesn't the lack of exits there, doesn't that potentially cause a problem?
Well, by having exit at Francis and Wellesley, there's, uh, you know, plenty of room to get, we're talking about, you know, the twenty block sections where you'll have exits. And as we see with what's going on with the I-90 right now, they're taking out an exit by Maple because of the hazard of having exits too close. So I think that we wanna make sure that there's safe on and off traffic there. And I think that by maintaining the integrity of Wellesley and Francis and Trent, obviously, it's gonna have to work its way down to Broadway and I-90, but there's plenty of access there.
Kate, what do you think about the design?
Um, I'm a little worried. Um, I've heard from constituents that they're concerned about a freeway going through the heart of our area. You know, people do say that it could bring economic development, but I'm just confused as to where we're seeing that. Um, I know that WashDOT is working to do some placemaking, uh, which could help that. But I'm still a little concerned, I think it could be detrimental through our community, and I just wanna make sure we're keeping a close eye on that.
Let's move to another issue on public safety, firefighters. We have this grant, that, Tim, we had this grant for forty-fourty firefighters that came from FEMA. Uh, that grant expires next year. Are we gonna do the race taxes, or are we gonna cut people from the fire department? I mean, that seems to be the two options that we have at this point.
Yeah, I think we need to lower the budget and where the money's going, and if we have to make cuts in an area that's not as needed as fire coverage, and that's what we have to do, but I think... Well, I think that we need to talk to the fire department, I think we need to talk to agency heads, look at public safety, look at, is there the need for the firefighters currently? I think that they're doing a great job with response times, it did bring response times up when they added those firefighters. But I've also met in discussions about shift changes, and I think that we've gotta talk to the union bargaining unit and see how they feel about maybe doing shift changes and other efficiency-saving measures too, so that we can keep those guys on staff.
Tim, can you think of any way you might support a tax increase, or at least letting voters decide on a tax increase for achieving the extra firefighters?
Well, we just saw in the last election cycle here, voters did approve the, uh, the safety communications tax, so I think that, yeah, leaving that to voters is the wisest direction to go.
Kate, what's your position on firefighters?
Um, I, I think we definitely need firefighters, and like I said, I think we also need a strong police force. So what, well, I think what we're seeing right now is a lot of our force is working overtime, which is causing our budget to put more funds towards those overtime payments. And so if we really dive into the budget, maybe we can find some more firefighters without going over to overtime, same in the police force. And that's a priority for me, to make sure that we're using our funds wisely. I think my... Okay. And I also believe that, you know, you were talking about taxes. Citizens in Northeast Spokane are hurting a little bit, and I think it would be hard for them to be able to stomach a tax right now. That being said, I've talked to a lot of citizens at their doorsteps, and if they see those services coming back into their community, I think they would vote yes on a tax base.
So you would need to support potentially going out there, if potentially you see the services? I mean, what, what would you need to see if we're gonna go ask them for a tax?
Well, when we talk more about not necessarily firefighters, I think they, they are lacking on response time as well, so we do need to get the response time up. But with specifically policemen and police officers, I see a lack of response time to the citizens of Northeast Spokane. Almost every block, I hit a door where someone says, "I called the cops," and they didn't show up for three hours. And those services aren't coming into our district, and we have the highest crime rates in Spokane. So we need to see those services coming back into our community, we need to make sure we have the patrol officers there in Northeast Spokane. And if they see those, those response times come faster, I think that they would be happy to support a tax. Uh, but that being said, it needs to come from them, I want them to make sure that, you know, they're able to vote on that.
Tim, how would you address the police officer issue?
Well, I actually have a plan that I'd like to implement, it's an explorer program, kind of like the ROTC for the police, so that we could actually do a cooperative community policing with getting people that are in different fields, for Department of Corrections, social working, things like that, out there doing minimal calls on investigations for property crime right now. As Kate mentioned, we have, you know, three-hour response time, in fact, I talked to a lot of people that they don't get a response call.
Do you think that the, have you talked to the guild about whether they support something like that, the union?
I know that it was a program that used to be utilized many years ago, and it also helps feed a pipeline of police officers into our police force. So that's another area where we're struggling, is getting qualified officers hired. So I think on both ends, an investigation, response, and a pipeline of good police officers, I think that we've gotta do something.
Let me do a quick word association here with you guys, kinda mix things up a little bit. Kate, first thing that comes to your mind, Mayor David Condon.
One, one word?
All right, first name that comes to your mind?
Mayor.
What kind of mayor?
First two-term mayor in a while.
Tim?
I think she stole my answer. Why?
How, what would you say the job of these people?
Well, currently, we have such a super majority on the council, I don't know that he's been able to take effect in the plans that he had set for it to do. So until we have balance on the council, I'm not sure. The strong mayor's pretty much hogtied at this point in time with a super majority that can overturn any veto.
Kate, do you see it that way?
Uh, I think he really took sexual harassment and sexual, uh, in sexual harassment in the workplace, and threw it under the rug. And that, to me, is my highest priority, being a strong woman in this community. I wanna make sure I'm standing up for women. And how he treated what happened with our police chief and Monique really hurts me personally as a woman, and I think it hurts our community. He made steps to make right choices and step in the right direction for women, and that kind of squashed it all. So as the, the biggest leader in our community, I think he showed his true colors there, and that was painful for a lot of folks.
In fairness, Ben Stucker?
Ben Stucker, uh, city council president.
Tim?
Uh, I would say, um, forceful.
Forceful, in what way?
Um, not very inviting to public testimony. It's just, uh, the rules, can't ask questions. One of the things I'd like to do when on the council is to open up that three-minute time period for the public, not to just comment and have silence, but for the representatives to be able to answer their questions.
You may have to go to the next one, but, uh, who would like to read it to... What's your position on how Ben Stucker has run the council?
Yeah, I, I think he has definitely had his passions and pushed them forward. And I think a lot of the things he's done has been very positive for this community. I, I definitely think, uh, we would probably butt heads a bit, I think we already have. But I think that makes it, that's the best part about government in my mind, is that people can still work together, not agree on every single issue, and he has done quite a bit for our community, so...
All right. All right, we're gonna move to our next segment of this course, which is a trivia. You Heather Bells?
I'm not left-handed, so if I...
Sorry to put you at this position, this is not terribly serious, but, um, we'll start here. Which one of the following presidents visited Spokane during his presidency? Theodore Roosevelt, Dwight Eisenhower, or Gerald Ford? And he dedicated Lewis and Clark High School.
Come on, Lewis High School, yeah.
Lady and the Brick.
That's your alma mater. Let's say Eisenhower. No, wrong.
Ford.
Wrong.
See, this is already the problem with city councils, we pay too much attention to presidential politics.
All right, this is in your district. What street is farther west? Sycamore or Rebecca?
Sycamore.
Very good. Next question. In what decade did Hillier reelect a socialist mayor?
Before nineteen twenty-four.
Kind of true, I was looking for something a little... Yes, okay. All right, nineteen ten is the answer. What is the largest park in your district?
Hays.
What is the park in the district? There's a couple of, there's so many parks there, just, that's the great thing about Spokane is all the parks, I never paced them off, though. Uh, let's see here.
Quick guess.
Quick guess, it's gonna be Harv, no, wait, yeah, Harmon.
No, it's Mini Haha.
It can't be Mini Haha. We don't even have operational sporting area there, almost.
A lot of the, uh...
Are you adding?
Natural area.
See, you're adding where all the squatters are on the hillside?
The official area. All right, last question. Civil rights leader and attorney Carl Maxey won an NCAA championship in what sport?
Foxing.
Yes, very good. That is the end of this question, is that you?
Oh, random, oh, no.
All right, Mike Chianti, can you turn over to our urban affairs reporter Nick DeChe for a quick, uh, audience question? So if you have a question, he will be our fill down here.
This is for Ben. Why would you support Proposition 1, that would make it legal for state employees to racially profile persons of color, even more than they already are in our Spokane, with state and county? Aren't we supposed to be compassionate state, or are we only, is that only for patients?
It's an interesting question, I don't think that our police should racially profile, I think that it's unconstitutional to do that. I think that police need to do their job in keeping our community safe. My support of, uh, keeping, basically what I support is keeping the policy where it was inside of the police department, rather than creating a new chapter of organs.
I have a question for both of you, um, and Ms. Burke, I'll go with you first. What are your, if you're elected, what are your top three priorities?
Top three priorities? I wanna make sure that when I get, when I get elected, that I am making sure that I listen to my constituents. So what I've heard at the doors so far has been our basic infrastructure that's lacking. Uh, I wanna make sure that we are contracting with the best types of votes to make sure we get the right materials in our streets, so that our dollar can go a little bit longer, and that we're advocating for those services in our community. So I don't have quite exactly top three things, but my main issues are making sure that the people in Northeast Spokane have a very loud voice, and that we're persistent in getting funds to definitely, you know, allocated to our community.
I think public safety is my top priority. What I'm hearing from people is that property crime's out of control, they don't feel safe in their community. My wife and I have run a childcare for decades, and we used to take the kids on hikes behind Mini Haha. But, um, we don't go there anymore because we feel unsafe. What I see happening is, maybe it's a culture shift, I don't know, but I know when I was a kid growing up in North Spokane, we didn't use locks on the doors, for the most part. We just kinda kept the door open all summer long. Uh, and today, where we're at, when I'm door belling, is people have to unlock their doors in the middle of the day to answer it and talk to me about their concerns. And the sound of that lock is a, is an indicator that public safety is their main concern. And then it definitely, um, infrastructure, when it comes to roads, I don't think it's the contractors. The street in front of my house was redone by a private contractor twenty years ago. I think our street department is using temporary fixes to try to continue to keep our roads surviving in the winters, and I think we needed to fix them properly the first time. And then number three is the economy, working with children for twenty years, where's their opportunities coming from? And where's the new family wage jobs in Northeast Spokane? And the North-South Freeway can be a conduit for that.
All right, I think we, one more? Okay, one more.
Come on, if you live in your district.
I have lived in Northeast Spokane for two and a half years, grew up in Spokane though.
I've been in North Spokane my whole life. I've been in our current location for seventeen years. Uh, the first house that I rented, moving out of my parents' house in high school, was over by Rogers, and I think I've collected weed pretty much most of my life.
All right, I think this is, that we need to move on to the next group of candidates, but everybody, let's thank... All right, so our next candidate is Candace Maum and Matthew House can come to the scene, come to the stage here today.
I'm gonna stand in for House.
Um, and I'll just give a quick introduction as they are walking to the stage. Candace Maum was elected to the council in two thousand and thirteen, she worked in real estate, previously was a recorded editor for KXLY. And Matthew House, co-owner, Pizza Restaurants Spokane, is former president and assistant for Washington Trust. So go ahead and hit us if you can.
I wanna start with Monroe, and this has clearly been the main issue in this district. Candace, last night you said on a debate that you supported the project. Candace, last night you said on a debate that you supported the project, we have the threat of potential legal action out there, a $15 million lawsuit, why do you support it?
I think, and you're speaking about the KSPS TV debate, everyone can see that, they can go to Facebook and find that, or go on to that, it'll be airing too for several weeks. And what I'm saying is, I'm standing up for the neighborhood, and the neighborhood for 15 years has been trying to find a solution for the people who are injured and dying on that street. And I think I mentioned that my family started a restaurant in the 1960s, and I actually got to work at the restaurant, and we didn't have all five lanes back then, and we could walk across safely, and it had a very safe shopping environment, walking environment, and it was a great business district. And that Monroe stretch is the only north-south street really in the district that has that special historic flavor and feeling, and that's why a lot of businesses have moved in, knowing that there could be some safety improvements and some redevelopment. And I think I also mentioned that the council found out about the application for the narrowing to reviewings after the fact, and one of the things that we did was change the law, so in the future, when there is a big change like this and a big grant, this sort of impact to neighborhood, it comes to city council, and we have a public discussion about, so folks can be notified about it, and I think that's gonna be working better in the future, and I hope we've made some changes there.
So what about the threat of legal action? I mean, Eddie, you continue to move forward, what do we do with the lawsuit?
Well, the claim, the claim, there's no lawsuit, but I think my best response to that would be that citizens and cities have a right to improve their streets, and if the rest of the community and the rest of the state had the concern that there would be a harm that potentially could happen, then I don't think a whole lot would be built. And so I don't know what the outcome would be, I actually haven't had major discussions about what the claim looks like, but the goal is actually to improve business. The goal is to have what Perry District has, and to have some of the improvements that the East Bright neighborhood asked for, and that is to make those pass registers ring, because now you have a safe place to walk, and you don't have the mirrors slammed off in your cars when you're trying to park, and that you actually have a place where people can get home and get to school, because I don't know if you've seen what it's like, but it's kind of like whack-a-mole when they jump across the street.
Matthew, I know that you've got some concerns about the project there, what about that neighborhood plan? I mean, do you think that we need to listen to the businesses?
So I have spoken to the neighbors out there as well, and to the business owners of Monroe, I am currently opposed to the project itself, I feel that there are some safety issues that need to be addressed. Absolutely, you talk to any of the businesses, and they'll tell you the same thing, yes, there are safety issues that are needing to be addressed. After going to the real estate summit recently, Spokane is estimated to grow approximately 200,000 people in the next 20 years, that's a substantial growth. Monroe is a main thoroughfare to downtown, to hospitals and everything, so I don't think that going down from five lanes to three lanes is safe, good, or reasonable, especially at the dollar amount that they're talking about. They're giving a $4 million grant, and now the project is up to 9.5 million, and I think it's gonna grow from there. There are other solutions to it, other council members have brought other solutions to the council, and he was turned down to even...
You're talking about a light ban against four-lane reductions?
Absolutely, there are compromises out there, I do know that the businesses want to have Monroe look more beautiful, there's no doubt about it, they also wanna make sure that people can get across the street safely. There are things that we can do, that we don't need to go down to three lanes with no less turnout, I think that the price tag is substantially high, and that they're not addressing all the true issues that are there.
Presumably if you go to that four-lane reduction, the city says that the grant money for that project is jeopardy, it could potentially cost the city more money, is that a concern to you?
Well, I think that we've already pledged to do 5.5 million dollars, I think that going down to the four lanes, we could certainly look at different avenues and different things that we need to do, if they're willing to spend that kind of money on it, I think that there are cheaper ways to do it. I'm not saying that we necessarily need to go down to the four lanes, I like the five lanes that we have, we can make some improvements in the safety issues, and it won't hurt the businesses. I, as a small business owner, feel for them, I understand what they're saying. There were several businesses that shut down in the Sprite corridor with that project, and so I understand what they're talking about, and I understand why they are suing the city for it.
Do you think it was worth, in the Sprite district, was it worth it?
The Sprite was originally a $5 million project, and I think Ben Stucker just came out and said it was over $20 million, no, I don't.
Candace's response to that amount.
Well, I think it's really important, then, when your elected official is representing you, that you represent the entire district. So I represent all the businesses along Monroe, and I can tell you that there is a division between the businesses, this is not a unanimous. In fact, many businesses have moved in and invested, hoping they can be the next Perry District. In fact, they're waiting for the construction to happen, so they can put in a new facade, so they can finally pave their alley, that's what they tell me, and they say, please, bring us on, we're waiting for this to go, we are ready to go with our new businesses. And honestly, I've seen quite a few businesses open up as well. So I think you have to, as elected official, represent all the stakeholders, not just one, and that's what I believe I've done. And so when I went to the Emerson Park Village neighborhood, and they were devising this plan, I said, no, we've gotta bring the businesses in. So I worked to hold a business open house at one of the businesses along Monroe, and we packed the room, and we all talked about it, we got together, and yeah, there's a lot of concern about what to do, but what I can tell you is, more people are going to get hurt if we turn this grant back, and one of those people who was hurt was a five-year-old girl, and I just met the mother of her little friend from that kindergarten, and she said, please, get this built, our neighborhood needs it and wants it, and in a latest memory, we have to fix this street, don't back down.
Matthew, there's another way, you say, to achieve safety, what is it?
And again, I feel that she is correct, we need to listen to everybody. When other city council members come up and they have other ideas, I think they need to be listened to, rather than just push aside safety issues. We definitely need some serious crosswalks through there, such as the ones that are on Hamilton near GU, absolutely love those push buttons, I use that regularly, if we had three or four of those, that would definitely be a huge improvement. There are so many things that we have just left off the table, we just wanted a free $4 million to do this grant, and I don't think that we've thought everything through.
Obviously, North Monroe's a big issue, I think, I'd like to move on to an additional issue, I wanna give you a chance on this first, Matthew. We've seen a big boom in development out in that particular part of town, in northwest Spokane, we've seen crowded classrooms, things like that, do you think that that part of town can handle more multifamily development, would you be in support of that?
In northwest Spokane?
Yes.
I think that there's plenty of space to go ahead and develop, whether it's a multifamily or a single family, right now we have a new development coming into our neighborhood, we just need to be more builder-friendly, and yeah, I think that there is...
Eddie, be more builder-friendly, what kind of things do you like as far as being more builder-friendly?
Well, right now, what I'm hearing is, I mean, you've got your, after speaking with the Spokane Home Builders and AGC and all those, they are frustrated that they are not able to do the tests that they wanna go out there, develop more land that we have, and things like that, regulations are getting more in the way.
You can tell that to the folks that are trying to get into kindergarten up in my neighborhood, where they're camped outside, and they have to have a lottery. You tell those to people who are sitting on Indian Trail Road through five lights and can't get out, and what they're saying is, you gotta keep infrastructure to keep pace with growth, and you know who pays for that infrastructure? We do. So we have to be very careful where we zone for higher density, and that's why, when I was on the planning commission, long ago, over a decade ago, we talked about centers and corridors, and focusing, I think I killed, focusing the growth, focusing the growth where we can afford to provide the infrastructure. And so that's why we have centers like Shale Center, and that Indian Trail where it's concentrated, but we make sure that we have the sewer pipes, and we have the streets, and we have the streetlights, and the schools, it's very difficult, because the schools are required to serve the community that lives there, and so it's a very delicate balance, and it's very expensive if you make a mistake. So plan to grow, yes, and grow even more.
Address that issue, Matthew, I mean, have you seen that issue in your district, the school overcrowding?
Again, in my area, I have not seen that there's overcrowding, I do know up on the Five Mile area, that is overcrowding up there as well, but that's also only partially the city and partially the county up there. I don't know that Woodbridge or Indian Trail or any of those schools are overcrowded at the current time.
I think it is time to move to our quiz for District 3, you guys ready?
Okay.
Here we go. In what neighborhood is Webster Park?
Northwest?
What neighborhood?
Anyone in the audience? Not a bunch.
That was the old northwest.
Are we all northwest?
How many blocks of historic brick streets exist in Council District 3?
Are you telling me Disney story?
No, just, I'm full of bricks.
On the actual streets, oh, I thought you were...
Yeah, how many blocks of brick streets are there in northwest Spokane?
Northwest Spokane.
Yes, some are. Yes, zero, zero's right! The region's first school is located near Drumheaders Springs in what is now northwest Spokane, who ran the school?
Chief Gary, I didn't pray that story.
Chief Gary.
Fair enough, yeah.
Okay, so we might get a little... Name one of the two existing entities that were once responsible for Spokane's last electric streetcar system, Spokane United Railways.
SDA.
Yes. The other is Avista. Alright, last question. Which of these three movies was not filmed partly at Ferguson's Cafe? Vision Quest, Benny and June, or Nights? Nights of Badassin'. Yes.
Nights of Badassin'.
Yes, you're right, you're right, you're good. So now, it is time for all these questions, for Nick, has a mic.
Two weeks ago, the Scripps Institute Promotion of Graphic Studies came out with a report that said that there's a 1 in 20 chance that by the year 2050, there will be a climate catastrophe that human beings will not be able to mitigate, and that would result in the completed isolation of human beings by the year 2100. So what can the city council do to reduce carbon pollution?
Let's take that first.
Wow.
Matthew, which one, you go ahead.
Boy, I hope you're wrong.
One in 20.
One in 20 chance?
That's a 5% chance.
5% chance. You know what?
So it's a 95?
Yeah, let's deal with the 95% that there were still gonna be here in 21.
So what about climate change as an issue, and the Paris report?
I think we have a lot more important issues to deal with here in the city, doing city issues rather than the Paris climate change, and the destruction of the country, 5%. We have a lot more issues to deal with, infrastructures, crime, you know, everything here in Spokane, I don't wanna deal with Paris climate change.
Yes, we deal with climate change every day, at city council. We survived a firestorm, we had to survive the unhelpful air that was the purple category that we never had before, and still we're gonna have to do that. We're spending over $300 million on our river, and cleaning it up, we need to protect our environment, and that's really going back to how we grow as a city. So by making our city more walkable, making it more dense where our services are, especially around our health services, because that's why a lot of people come to Spokane, making sure that we can provide a healthy environment for the people that do move into our city, where they can walk, where they can ride their bike, where they can get to what they need and make it convenient, and I think that's what you've been seeing from a lot of the work that I've done and other council members have been doing, because we deal with climate change already.
I just finished building with my husband a duplex unit up by Vanito Park, and we have a basement on extras that we wanna build on. We are finding it very difficult to work with the planning department and the water department to get these buildings done. I'd like to know what you think can be done to help builders like us develop our property, you say you want the city denser, but you're making it difficult with all of the regulations.
Well, I'm very sorry that you have that experience, and I build homes too, and I know how frustrating it can be, especially with some of your first ones, I know maybe you build a lot of them, but when it's the first time through, we definitely do see that we have to communicate better, and make sure that they know all the rules and regulations. A lot of those actually come from the state or the national laws about electrical and safety, and so we wanna make sure you're building a state home, that you're building it correctly so you don't have water coming into your basement, so it's really, those rules are there to protect you, and we hope that you had a customer service, friendly customer service experience, if you didn't, just give me an email, we'll find out what happened, but I know that the mayor has been working really hard on that, of course, the mayor and the administration are the ones that do the staffing and do that one-on-one customer service, so if you did have a problem, just let us know.
Matthew, do you wanna address that issue?
Absolutely, yes, I think that it is sad that there are so many restrictions, kinda similar to when I opened my restaurant, some of those crazy things that I had to go through, things such as doorbells and crazy stuff like that. So when I hear people saying that they want to build, but there's more restrictions and all this stuff, it is frustrating, and I understand that, and I wanna make sure that people that wanna develop and people that wanna provide living places for rentals or other places, that they have the necessary resources and the people to help them to do it a little easier.
Hi, I am the Emerson Park Village neighborhood president, and I know that if we cut the lane reduction, we most likely lose a lot of the state's grant money that we were saving for the project, and that project will be delayed, which means that we will not get safer streets, we will not get more pedestrian-friendly wheelchair-accessible sidewalks, especially with winter snow, which is a lot of the things that we really want to see in our business district. And if this gets put on the back, or because we can't agree on a lane reduction that would bring us out to code and compliant with state laws, if not now, when will our neighborhood, which has stood in solidarity with the Lushland understanding business district in our neighborhood, when will we get these safer streets if not now, when decades later?
Matthew, you wanna take that?
Well, again, if we're, I mean, if you're looking at the whole project being dependent on a $4 million grant, you know, the city itself has already said that, okay, if we get this $4 million grant, we're gonna put in $5.5 million, and I can tell you right now, that price tag seems extremely low to me, especially after the whole spread... the whole, um, spread corridor, uh, project, debacle, project. And so to me, it's one of those where, uh, you know what, we, we are committing to doing some funds so that we can have safer streets. Again, if we look at it and try to do it in a, in a way that's good for everybody instead of just listening to one group.
Multiple groups.
Okay, multiple groups, but there are several other groups out there that also are being affected by it, and so, um, to me, if you're writing, if you're, if you're doing this whole project on just a $4 million grant, I don't think it's the right solution.
Alright, I think we, uh, have run out of time for City Council District Three. Thank you very much. We will be next.
Well, I think we're talking safety versus speed, and if you have to pick, I pick safety.
Okay, alright, so, uh, thanks for the feedback.
Hey, tell me you're so fast, sorry about that. Oh, okay, it's not for us. Great.
All right, is this the second or last one?
This is the last one. We got a couple four and things.
Okay.
Hey, how much you want to get in? Bet we get asked about Rock Two.
Get asked about Rock Two, and rocks under the freeway, that was my guess.
Yeah, just thinking. I thought we haven't heard this before.
Alright, we're going to go ahead and start up Council District Number Two. On stage here, we have Brian Banks. He is a attorney, civil rights attorney, appointed to council in 2016. We have Ann Donow.
Come on.
Wow.
Try Dunow. D-O-N-O-W.
We have a former Spokane Park Board member and founder of Dunow. So he is.
Oh, wow. We're great guys, we don't have, we don't usually have to pronounce it.
My apologies, I was a pro ed kid. Yeah, thanks, again, thank you both for being, I don't think I said that the last one. Um, Brian, I want to talk, start with you. You're the only candidate on stage today, or who will take the stage tonight, who supports Proposition Two, the fine on uncovered and untreated, uncovered coal and untreated oil trains. Explain your position on that one.
Yeah, so over a year ago, um, the train rolled through Spokane, an oil train blew up in Bossier, Oregon, and after that, Spokane firefighters came to me and said, "We have a huge problem, this oil is coming through, it's explosive, we have elevated rails, it comes out, we're going to lose downtown and there's nothing we can do about it." And in Texas, they said, they have a rule there, that before they transport a oil that's highly volatile, they'll stabilize it, they'll take the liquid natural gas out of it. And can we do that? And I said, "Well, you know, generally, rail transport's a federal issue." Uh, but back in the 2000s, a oil pipeline blew up in Bellemian and killed several kids, blew up our version of Riverfront Park. And I worked with Congress, and we changed the law, and Congress allowed for delegation of some enforcement in some state seats to localities in states. And I found the law for railway, Railway Safety Act, that says, "No, localities can do that if there's not a rule about the new states issue, and it's something unique, and it's not a referendum." So the issue isn't whether it's constitutional, Congress can delegate it. The issue is, if the rule requiring removal, is that, um, is that unreasonable or not? And that's something that could be done in court. But when I talked to constituents, they basically said, "We're worried about it, my kids still live in Clark High School still." And I just had to decide, should I take this avenue that Congress has given us and let the voters decide, or just do nothing and be a victim of the next train problem? And so that's the choice I had, but I was really clear that the voters should decide on it. And the rest of council, uh, really didn't want to send it to the voters, and so it's really just Councilmember Canir and I who had that idea, but the voters got the signatures, it's not really the council issue.
Andy, I, I know you have a different position on this. Uh, is it based on legality? What, what, what's your concern here?
Yeah, well, if you're going to start a lawsuit, you ought to have a prospect of winning, right? So rail safety isn't happening when a lawsuit happens. So when you can't even get to the Center for Justice, Spokane's leading progressive public interest law firm on your side, you can't get up the municipalities on your side, the odds are, if the case is dealt with. So I am all for rail safety, and it's interesting to hear Brian's answer. I want to do what he did in Bellemian. I want to go to my federal legislators, I want to get the towns municipalities and the states to put pressure on it, and they're doing that right now, and I want to get and update the existing regulations. That's what gets rail safety on the ground, it's not a lawsuit that's going to lose in five, seven court.
Andy, you're a member of the Spokane River Forum, you're the director of the Spokane River Forum, do you have concerns about what this could potentially do to our river?
Well, absolutely, and let's talk about chlorine, let's just talk about oil, let's talk about all sorts of things. If anything dumps into this aquifer and it gets into the river, and I've been to the emergency response teams, it's an absolute disaster, and it doesn't have to blow up to cause a disaster. So we have lots of groups right now, you know, with pipelines going underneath, uh, you know, above ground, gas storage tanks and all the rest of it, who work hard to keep toxins out of the aquifer and out of the river. Um, myself, as facilitator in the Spokane River Forum, we got over $500 million, that's over half a billion dollars, in clean water activity from Portland down to, uh, the city of Spokane, we're doing upgraded treatment plants. That's facilitation, that's collaboration, that's putting real dollars on the ground to make a real difference with clean water.
Brian, what, what are the efforts at the federal level? I mean, there are efforts underway in Congress to address this.
Yeah, so the thing is, uh, Congress was frustrated with the Department of Transportation, they were so slow getting regulations, especially on new threats like oil trains, which are essentially new. They created this law, and they called it a gap filler law. It was to encourage localities to address emerging issues. And that's what this, the reason there's no other, um, cities who have this, is because this is a new problem, and Spokane's the only one with the elevated railway that has that unique situation, so we're the only one that can do it. Uh, the lawyers who have weighed in so far publicly about this, in my mind, they don't have any experience actually litigating these kind of cases. I have, I've taught constitutional law, and there's a case in the Ninth Circuit that says this law that Congress said localities can do, emergency issue safety, until the Department of Transportation does it, is constitutional, it's legal, it's appropriate. And the reason that we're not talking about chlorine is the Department of Transportation has rules for that, but they don't have Bakken oil. They said it's the most hazardous liquid that railways transport, but they haven't done the rules. And Senator Cantwell, and Murray, and Governor Inslee, I've spoken with all their offices, they like this change in the vapor, and this is one way to put pressure on the Department of Transportation to do its job, just like Congress wanted it to.
Can, you've talked to congressional offices who approve of this approach of legal?
Well, the approach that they want is the oil pressure to go down, and none of them have told me that they're against this initiative. Uh, they want any way that we can do pressure, and simply Spokane standing up, and as a majority saying we want this to happen, will advance our cause with the Department of Transportation.
So do you think if, if there's a failed lawsuit, is it a failure of this initiative?
Well, so the city, just to be clear, the city's not bringing a lawsuit about this. The voters are saying, uh, that they want safer oil trains through the city, uh, and then it's up to the courts to decide, but it won't be whether it's unconstitutional, it'll be, is that requirement to lower the vapor pressure to eight instead of the current 13, is that undoing burdensome compared to the damage in an explosion? That will be the question, and there'll probably be a short trial about that and some appeals.
Uh, Andy, Scott, you're a bit, do you think it's going to be longer than that?
Well, you know, I love Brian, we've known each other for years, but Brian's living in Brian's world, okay? So this is a constitutional case, they will bring a lawsuit, and just so you understand how these things work, and I talk about the Seattle Light model in Spokane, so you know, Seattle adopted an income tax, right? So I just read a paper today that they are now putting $250,000 aside to try and defend that, that action, okay? The same type of thing is going to happen in Spokane. This notion, only a lawyer could say, there isn't going to be a lot of litigation, and this isn't going to be expensive, and we're going to get a quick result. It just doesn't work that way.
So just a thing, I asked the city attorney's office, you might remember Proposition One was discussed earlier, they tried to put it on, that was found unconstitutional in court. Uh, I am taken off the ballot. I asked the city attorney's office an email, what was the cost of that? Zero, because we have city attorneys on staff. And so it doesn't necessarily have to be that way. Will it cost something? Yes. Is it worth it? Is it worth it to protect ourselves? Yes.
So, just to be clear, the city attorneys, the city attorneys that you so respect have said, "This will not fly." That's how the hearing examiner. So one day, when you like the answer, you're listening to the city attorney, the next day, you're lecturing them.
The city attorney did not say that, actually. The city attorney's office has its own legal office, they have not given an opinion on this.
Let's move on to, Andy, I want to talk to you about Riverfront Park, because you were on the, the committee there, you've now come out and saying that you had concerns about the budget of that project, but weren't you in charge of that project for a significant period of time? We heard a, over a year ago, in my column, Dick Duchesne's story, that the former park president was raising concerns about potential spiraling costs at a time that you were in charge of it. What did you do at that time to, to stop the project, or change the scope of the project?
So first of all, when you're chair, you can't be in charge. If I had been in charge, there would have been some differences, but at any rate, in the year I was chair, uh, we found out that we had a very underbaked product that we had sold to product, uh, that we had sold to public. So what I did is, we hired, uh, with staff, we hired four out of five design teams, we rebuilt the budget from the ground up, uh, and we restructured the management team. That's a lot of work in one year. At the end of one year, because I'm a numbers guy, I looked at it and I said, "Boy, I think we're about $5 to $7 million over budget. We need to go out to the public, we need to be transparent about it, we need to put tight cost controls in." I lost the discussion, okay? So that was city staff, includes the mayor's office, the council, uh, president, absolutely knew about what was going on, and I said, "Look, I cannot sleep at night knowing that we've got this gap." But it was a matter of opinion, okay? I was looking at numbers, we hadn't actually let the construction contracts out. So they went out there with the story that we were on time and on budget, when that story just wasn't flying anymore, I said, "Look, my conscience, I got to go, but you guys have at it." A year later, that deficit grew to $10 to $15 million. And at that point, I felt like I needed to say something, and I did say something. And all through the summer, with the inlander and all the rest of it, nobody has questioned one of my facts or one of my figures, but they keep sticking with the story of on time, on budget, as they double and triple down. You guys are not getting what you paid for, and now they got this cockamamie enterprise fund is yet another way to move the goalposts around, uh, on the park.
Brian, what would you change about the park's management?
Well, I, I think part of the challenge on the park board is, uh, it's a unique thing, and actually was a, a great thing about Spokane, is that we have a set aside number for the budget for parks, and an independent park board, and so there's less, uh, the mayor and the council raiding the park, uh, for other budget things. What I would change, based on the, the time that I've been on city council, is city council doesn't really have much to say about it, uh, we usually have, my face council member Fagan's on the park board currently, so we have a kind of a liaison. Uh, I would make it like the school board, that the park board members are elected instead of appointed by the mayor, and that way the park board would have a constituency, and they go out to the people, uh, and talk with them. And the, the one thing that I'm disappointed, Andy's done some great service on the park board, and anyone, it's a thankless job, and he's worked very hard on it, but the one piece that I was missing was, at a time when we needed him there, he left, and he didn't tell us why at the time. Because I, I wasn't on council at the time, but I think many of us in the room, if we had known that actual issue, then we might have been able to apply some political pressure earlier, before we got to the place we're now, and that's what I'm hoping we'll get in the future.
Quickly respond to that, Andy.
So first of all, we've had many decades of the park board serving and serving well. Uh, making them elected officials is just a dodge from responsibility. Uh, yeah, Candace was on the board, she certainly knew what was going on. Karen Stratton is married to the park board president, I would expect that she was knowing, knew what was going on. I asked regularly the, the park board president, "Have you informed Ben Stucker of what's going on?" And he said, "Yes, I have." So those are three, uh, council people right there. The fact of the matter is, council does have oversight. You have to approve the park board budget every year. Anytime you sniff anything or feel anything's wrong, you can call the park board into the meeting. Stop dodging and just tell the public what has been taken off the board because you're over budget, what are the choices that are left, and what's the best way to move forward and include them in the process. The park board can hold hands every day of the week, go council to council with council people, and have that conversation, but you just won't do it.
Yeah, so that's contrary. We, we have committee meetings, and all the time during this, for this election, I haven't seen the Andy at the committee meetings, and the last one we had with the Parks Department is they went through every iteration in the budget, all the changes, what we're losing, what still needs to be do, and what's there, so we have a window in that. But that's the kind of information that me, as a public member, I wasn't on the council at the time, that's what I wanted to hear from the park board.
Okay, let's, so hang, hang on one second. So I, I blogged about this this summer, and it's just a perfect example. So they get heat over the cover, no cover, they come out and they say, "Look, we restored the $24.5 million for the pavilion." Then they release a budget for $22.1 million for the, for the pavilion in September. Now, if I can read that online, you can too, Brian, hold them accountable.
Alright, let's move on to our quiz. Okay. What is Spokane's newest public golf course?
Oh, that's an easy question.
Okay.
Oh.
Alright. Spell Rose Hours.
R-O-S-A-U-E-R-S.
Very good. On what arterial street is the congregational church that originally was a synagogue? Cedar. No.
Cedar.
No.
That's what I said.
Oh, I thought, sorry.
Anyone in the audience?
Walnut.
Walnut.
Uh, right next door.
Close, we're close.
What is the busiest north-south arterial south of 29th Avenue?
South?
Yes, Regal is correct. What was the first street name in Spokane?
Spokane Falls Boulevard.
No.
Riverside. So they get heat over the cover, no cover. They come out and they say, look, we restored the $24.5 million for the pavilion. Then they release a budget for $22.1 million for the pavilion in September. Now, if I can read that online, you can too, Breen. Hold them accountable.
All right. Let's move on to our quiz. Okay. What is Spokane's newest public golf course?
Oh, that's an easy question.
Okay.
Oh.
All right. Spell Rose Hours. Very good. On what arterial street is the congregational church that originally was a synagogue? No.
Cedar.
No.
That's what I said.
Oh, I thought, sorry.
Anyone be honest?
Walnut.
Walnut.
Uh, right next door.
Close. You're close. What is the busiest north-south arterial south of 29th Avenue?
South?
Yes, Regal is correct. What was the first street name in Spokane?
Spokane Falls Boulevard.
No. Riverside. Good guess, but, oh, it's right.
Ooh.
All right. Nick? All right, let's find some questions.
By the way, the chairs up here, way more comfortable than down there. That's why you wanna run for council.
We've had many shootings, citizens in the last year, perhaps by the police. Perhaps they were all justified, possibly not. But the citizens of Spokane have overwhelmingly, just a few years ago, that they wanted independent police oversight. So we established our ombudsman. Many of us feel the ombudsman, as it has been worked out thus far, does not have sufficient independence. We have an excellent ombudsman currently, I believe, who's doing the best we can within the limitations of the ordinance to be an independent oversight person. What would you support, or perhaps oppose, to have a more independent ombudsman ordinance in the future?
Breen, you've worked on this issue a long time.
Yeah, so, we've been, since the Otter's End case, that's when we started working on it, and we got a good agreement from the mayor and the council back in, I wanna say, 2008. But the challenge was, there was already a police union agreement, and you can't just change that unilaterally. And so we agreed to what we called ombudsman light at the time, and said we'd get it renegotiated. And that just didn't get done, that's why Prop One got passed. Right now, we're in negotiations, but I spent the first year on council, meeting with every stakeholder, including the unions and the neighborhoods, and drafted, probably 25 drafts of a new ordinance that would give the ombudsman independent investigations, but wouldn't interfere with any internal investigation. So that would get done. And that's waiting, that's been vetted, it's gone through the commission, and it's just in bargaining. And at the end of it, I'm hopeful that we will get that in bargaining and get it passed into law. If we don't get it in bargaining, then the question is, do we go to arbitration in order to get it? Because it's in our city constitution, I think we're compelled to do that.
Andy?
So the ombudsman office has had a difficult history. It's had a hard time getting started. The commission which Breen is on right now is actually at loggerheads with the ombudsman in terms of staffing and whether new staff reports to the commission or the ombudsman. So, you know, the journey goes on. I think what's missing here is, we haven't really checked in with the public when I talk with folks. So there are still some legitimate concerns out there, but if Rob Curly's still in the audience, I think it would be a good feature story to revisit the conversation of where the ombudsman's office has been, what these differences are that Breen's talking about, and get the public re-engaged in it. Because right now, it's kind of a tussle behind the scenes, but we really need to get it in front of the scenes. I think it's a really good one for the paper and others to lead on.
Time for another one?
Hi, my name's Patricia Nolte, I live in Eagle Ridge subdivision, and I have several issues about access to that part of town where there's a lot of development that has gone on in the last 10 years, is still going on, apparently more developed in the future out there. There's real safety issues on 195, Wall Jam Drive, and on Cedar Road. All of these were built at a time where that was an agricultural area, traffic was light. Now, there's a thousand houses in my subdivision, there's 200 for another one, there's a couple of other subdivisions that we've logged about, and nothing has changed. You know, I've been, I have been to the mayor talking about that, I've tried to get, you know, some attention to some instructional improvements for that part of town. We're not seeing anything. DOT had meeting up there last year, that they were gonna try to use some safety improvements with some money they had found to 195, so people don't die making that left turn across 195 coming from their side of the street. So that's my question. What are you gonna do about that, that whole part of town?
Andy, first on this one?
So, you're right. So I, first of all, I like to hike the bluff all the time, so I've sort of watched Eagle Ridge emerge over the years. But I doorbell there for about three weekends in a row. That's an interesting place to get around, and getting on and off 95 is an interesting thing. You're absolutely right. And as I doorbell to other places, the backup coming up Hatch Road is really bad, too. So I think we do need to get with streets, we do need to get with DOT, and we do need to make that priority. That is not sustainable, what's going on. We also have school issues there. It is way overcrowded. They didn't finish Moran before they started the next expansion, so you got kids moving back and forth, too. So right now, tremendous amount of development out there, and people are really having a hard time keeping up with infrastructure. So that should be a priority for our district.
Yeah, so, one of the challenges on the current council is decisions that get made about where people can develop and land use gets made years ahead of it actually being built. And the current council is left with the problem of that density in a place that didn't have infrastructure. But I'll tell you what, the current council is working on, probably the biggest problem to me is 195 and the safety things. And it sounds like you went to the meeting, you know what the proposals are, keep those left turns and funnel people down to overpasses. That's a state project, state money. But what the council is doing is meeting with our legislators, and there's several of them, because it covers several districts, to get the funding. And we're unified, really the whole council is unified on that, to get the funding for those safety features for that. And then to make sure that in future land use decisions, that we do have a say over, that we put our density where our infrastructure is. And every time you do that, you save money for the future, you save safety. And every time you take that piece of, oh, we're just gonna expand into the urban growth because it's a little bit cheaper per lot, we just pass the bill on to our heads, and we have to stop that.
All right. Well, it is, that is the end of the Baker District Two. I'd like to call up the school candidates, but thank you. All right. Spicy's line.
I have a feeling.
People stayed.
What?
People stayed. Our education reporter, Vice Frank Fish.
Hello.
And our candidate, we have Mike Weiser, who's appointed to the Spokane School Board earlier this year, is the vice president of strategic planning at Chad's College. And we have Jennifer Thomas, she's a jerk, whoa.
Getting crazy.
Really, thank you. She's the director for business development with the general project. Pila?
Well, let's start out, first question, should school security officers, campus resource officers be armed? Why or why not? Let's start with Jennifer.
I think campus resource officers being armed is a good idea. The reason I think that is because in talking with law enforcement, if there was an active shooter in a school, who, if there were multiple of them, and they were working together, they could level a lot of students and faculty in under three minutes. And that's about how long it would take for the first 911 responders to arrive, three minutes. So by having armed community resource officers in the schools, it would give them ability to neutralize that threat faster. However, I think that's something that we need to have conversations about, because I understand that it's a hot topic.
I disagree. I think that campus resource officers should not be armed. They should be there to respond to safety situations of any kind, including an active shooter, but I think their first reaction should be, how do I get more students and staff for safety? How do I call in the police quickly and guide the police to come in and take care of the situation? And we're, our Spokane schools were an urban area, we were really close to the police department, we had great connections, great communication, there's no reason why we either put guns into our schools.
Sort of follow up, more generally, generally, what should the district be doing or what can the district do to improve school security? We'll start with you, Mike.
Well, I think the district has done a lot the last couple of years, going to a single point of entry for all schools. So that means that if any student or parent is coming on campus after school starts, they have to go through the office and get buzzed in. I think it used to be the case, you used to be able to get into a lot of different areas. So that's one way to make things a little more secure. Another big thing, unfortunately, learning from the frequent shootings, just to kind of take a step back and look at our security practices, what do we do for lockdowns? How do we make sure that we get the word out really quickly if there is a lockdown situation? So there's been a lot of thought going into that, how do we improve that, drills in different situations. For example, the district had a lot about what if it's lockdown during lunch hour or during recess? Yeah, a lot of kindergarten is locked down during frequent, and then you kind of go into a different school classroom, and just kind of hang out for a long, very good time. And so they're thinking through those issues, and we can do more to just continue ongoing training and preparation for those situations.
I'd love to see Spokane Public Schools talk with the police department and see about partnering with them more. And then taking some of those funds that we use with community resource officers and investing them in other places to support students.
Next question, do you believe that, or do you think that transgender students should be able to use the bathroom that corresponds with their gender identity? Start with Mike.
I think, yes, I do. I think that, you know, before this became an issue, really publicly with lots of debate, that would happen naturally, and then students would be, you know, none the wiser, and if a student looks like a boy and using the boys restroom, then in a respectful way, then it's not a problem, nobody got a problem. So I think that can continue, and that would see that issue.
I think that restrooms and locker rooms are two different issues. And I personally, having four daughters, would want them to also feel comfortable. So yes, we need to look at the transgender students and make sure that we're compensating for them. We also need to look out for the rest of the student body. And being on the Human Rights Commission, it's absolutely important to make sure that everybody is represented and everybody is looked out for. But I would like to see there be gender-neutral locker rooms for transgender kids.
How can the district address the disproportionate discipline of minority of students and special education students? What specific ways can the district address that? Start with you.
Will you repeat it one more time?
How can the district address the disproportionate discipline of minority and special education students?
Yes. We definitely need to look at that disproportionality. I think that kids that are of color and poverty are being disciplined at a, I mean, it's clear, at a higher pace than regular, than other kids. I think that when a kid is hungry, homeless, has trauma going on at home, it's really impossible to come to school and learn. And I would love to see, number one, there be more social workers in our schools that can help deal with those family issues that are taking place. And number two, help to support the teaching staff, and being able to get the kid into a place where they are able to learn, instead of dealing with their hunger, dealing with their trauma that's happening inside their personal space.
I think the district has taken a big step forward just this school year, in terms of rolling out training for cultural competence, as well as training for restorative practices. Before this year, it was oftentimes an optional intervention that each school principal could kind of decide whether and how much to train their staff on, you know, their cultural competence, positive behavior supports, or restorative practices. And so some schools have had success with it, and others didn't. So I'm optimistic that this year, through some recommendations from a community-led work group, can make a lot of progress. I don't think it's gonna take just this one year, though, and so I think we need to keep the community involved in those issues. Looking at the data, the district has been, I think, pretty good about sharing the data that shows those attacks, disproportionality by different ethnic groups, by classes of poverty, and so forth. So I think we kind of need to keep the awareness there and make sure we're not in a situation where we have staff who decide not to discipline, not to suspend, because they are worried about the numbers, and they're worried about, you know, how the school will look to the community. We have to make sure the practices are there and let the numbers follow that training as long as the best practices are in place and resources are there to work through the kids' issues. When students are acting out, it's oftentimes something at home going on, they can talk through it, you need to have time and awareness to have those discussions.
Well, and to me, that seems like really the trust. But how do you actually do that, though? How do you get, like, district-wide in buy-in, something, such a large district with so many employees? I mean, what would you, how do you actually implement that? Does that make sense?
That does. So I think, you know, this school year, it's, there are certain standards for different sorts of classes, that principals and assistant principals are required to take, and kind of be a, you know, train the trainer sort of approach. And that's one way to get buy-in, is not saying, hey, everybody in the school building, every staff member, come in, let's do some training all together. It's, let's start with a couple folks, let's test it out, let's see how it kind of works, and have them lead the community through their belief. They need to lead the organization, I told you, to make sure those practices are fully rolled out.
You can add a little bit more.
Thanks. I do think that principals need to be able to implement it within their own schools, but I also think that the school board needs to be backing up across the district, like, this is the policy, and this is how we're gonna support each school in implementing that. And it needs to not be a loose idea of, we should deal with this problem, but you're free to figure out exactly how to do that with no support from us. We need to make sure that teachers, educators, people in the building have the backup that they need to be able to implement the policies that we're asking them to implement.
Time for the quiz.
Oh, boy.
Which elementary school in Spokane Public Schools has the highest percentage of kids qualified for free? [beep]. Paul's Elementary? No.
Stevens.
No. It is slogan.
Sleeper.
Which elementary school in Spokane Public Schools has the lowest percentage of kids qualified?
Wilson Elementary?
Wilson it is, yes. What is the mascot of Shaw Middle School? Anyone?
Vikings.
Vikings. More than 70 languages are spoken in the Spokane Public Schools, true or false?
True.
True, 77. Which of Spokane's high school buildings, still used as a high school, is the city's second oldest? Yes.
Lewis and Clark.
Rogers. Rogers is. Let's get some audience questions.
The federal law that governs the special education students with disabilities and their discipline, can you explain how you see Spokane Public Schools doing presently? And secondly, how would you like to see that move in the future?
Did you say specific discipline, or just in general education?
Discipline.
Okay. So I think, as we were talking about earlier, there's currently a gap between the discipline rates you see in Spokane schools for special education students and that we should see in an average school district in Washington State. So we definitely have room to improve. And I think I'm most excited to see the report from the Urban Club, which is a group that's just finished up going through Spokane schools and analyzing our practices around special education. I think we've, are doing, taking great steps to improve practices through discussion with superintendent's work group.
Did you say specifically discipline, or just in general education?
Discipline.
Okay.
So, I think, as we were talking about earlier, there's currently a gap between the discipline rates you see in Spokane schools for special education students, and that we should see in an average school district in Washington State. So, we definitely have room to improve. And I think I'm most excited to see the report from the Urban Climate, which is a group that's just finished up going through Spokane schools and analyzing our practices around special education. I think we've, are doing, taking great steps to improve practices through discussions with superintendent's work group, but the rubber really hasn't quite hit the road all the way. I think we need that unbiased third party opinion to really rectify it going forward.
So, I have a daughter who is being tested, because I think she's on the spectrum. And a lot of times, it looks like she's having behavior issues. She looks like she's having meltdowns and throwing tantrums, and angry, and hitting her sisters. However, I also am aware, I call it her spin cycle. She's not a bad kid, but she gets overstimulated really easy. And as I've been out door belling and talking to parents and in the community, I hear a lot of people asking the same question, like, what are you doing? What would your plan be? And there are a lot of paraeducators and educators who are working with kids who have learning disabilities that aren't trained specifically with their disability. And I would like to see, within District 81, that we make sure that the aides, paraeducators, teachers who are working with the kids directly have more training to help them feel backed up when they're in that situation. Because sometimes it's hard for them to be able to step back and think, or call for help or whatever, but, but having the right training in that situation, they would be able to diffuse it, recognizing that it's not a child acting out, it's just simply that I can't put two and two together right now, and it's frustrating me so badly. So, I'd like to see, again, more support.
This question is for Golden. It's pretty easy, but why do you think you're right for this position?
I'll start. I think I'm right for this position because I am passionate about kids. I live in the Hilliard District, right behind Rogers High School. And I moved there with a heart that was vested in the neighborhood before I was even there. In 2011, Rogers had a graduation rate of less than 50%, and in the last five and a half, six years, they've gotten it to 77%. I mentor at Rogers, and I, the kids I come in contact with win my heart on a regular basis. And I think that as a school board, being able to make policy changes that benefit our kids, and helping them to be lifelong learners and succeed where they're at, is, it changes, it can change the trajectory of whole generations, not just the ones doing right in front.
So, I think I'd like to continue on the school board, because I'm really a big fan of public education. I think it needs to be a great equalizer in our society. We have a free capitalist democracy, we have to have public education that it works for as many students as possible. So, I really want a school board that wants each and every student to succeed, and wants practices and programs in place that are gonna help as many students as possible achieve their goals. I think I'm right for the position, because I've been in classrooms since my parents, since my children. My daughters were in preschool, and now since eight years in Spokane Public Schools, that at least one of them has been in there. I've been there as a parent volunteer in parent teacher groups, in a classroom, treating with reading, grading papers, making copies, being a treasurer on PTG, and other volunteering stuff. I've worked with school-based healthcare, worked for, volunteered for communities and schools. And I think I can take that volunteering passion for education, my child's involvement in schools, and my work experience, which has been really helpful in my time on the board so far, it's my background in consulting and engineering and strategic planning's been really essential, and getting up to speed quickly on the school board and tracking all the issues. So, that's why I hope to stay on the school board. Thank you.
Hi, I believe boards approve class size reduction. My wife has taught Spokane schools for 30 years, and I know that teachers are overwhelmed trying to reach out to kids in many different learning situations, and I'm wondering what your opinion is on class size reduction, and what you're able to do about it?
Okay, I guess I'll start. I think that we need to go lower, and it was a surprise for me to learn on the school board, unfortunately, to get on there, to learn how class size reduction works, which is, it doesn't mean that even if the law says we have to be at 20 or 17, it doesn't mean that a particular classroom has 20 or 17 kids. It means when you add up the time that they spend in science class, or in library, or PE, if you add all those things up, then you can actually reduce that number. So, a teacher can still have 25, 26 kids in a classroom, but the equivalent class size is actually lower. And that, you know, teachers do benefit from having more time to prepare and develop the content for the next part of the day. But we really need to get down to a point where we don't have a classroom where 26 kids are showing up and are staying all year long. So, I think with the clear funding, the legislature passing, stepping in the right direction, it won't get us there to where the community wants us to be in terms of class size. So, we have a lot of room to go, and the school board can play a big role in advocating, and letting our legislators, let us play towards, know what's really happening inside of our schools with the funding that we have.
Jennifer?
Yes, I'm in favor of class size reduction as well. Teachers trying to be able to make an impact in 25, 26 lives on a daily basis is very challenging, and so being able to reduce that number to support them, I think, does.
This is the end of this segment, I'm getting around with applause.
So, thank you all for coming, and I can't tell you how proud I am and love you all. This was an amazing discussion, lots of thoughtful questions and thoughtful answers, and people, we proved tonight that we can have thoughtful discussions that we needed without yelling and being mean. It was amazing to hear us disagree, but disagree as adults. I loved it so much. So, I'm proud of you all, thank you all for coming. We want to do more of these, did you come up with any? I want to thank Mark and Tracy, isn't this building great? I love that when these moments of our history get saved, and you have to walk through the rest of the building, it's amazing. And down hidden underneath these doors down below, it's a whiskey bin. It should build it right now. So, it's amazing. We've been working really hard over the last year to make this spokesman better, and more stories, more photos, and we have more coming. We are starting a book club called Northwest Passages. Our first book meeting will be on November 16th, we're gonna have all sorts of, if you're a subscriber, you won't miss it, because it's gonna be all over the paper. And the first one will be with, evening with Sean Vessel, who'll talk about writing about Spokane, and writing about the West, and of course, his latest book, Daredevil, which was just named best work of fiction in Washington. But the big one is gonna be on December 6th, where we will be discussing the book American War. This book is really gonna be amazing. It just came out this week, it's already been optioned to be a movie with Leonardo DiCaprio. The book just came out, and the author is only speaking in a handful of cities, and they're all famous, New York, Chicago, Toronto, and we said, yeah, but you should come here. And last week, he said, alright, I'll come here. The rest of the book club authors are gonna be that way, too. We have New York Times Best Sellers coming, you're gonna love it. And we're gonna have just thoughtful discussions. So, thank you all for coming, this means a ton to me, and please keep reading our paper, because journalists who document the history would like to keep their jobs. So, you don't have to leave, we're not shutting the bar down yet, and if you liked the talk...